Over there, okay, getting the thumbs up. We're gonna call this meeting to order, the regularly scheduled December meeting of the Loma Linda City Council. Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Councilman Jindal.
President.
Councilman Lenart.
Here.
Councilman Rigsby.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tempore Daley.
Here.
Mayor Duper.
Present.
Thank you.
We did meet in closed session, and I'll ask the city attorney to report on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council was in closed session in the capacity of the successor agency and took action on item C. This was a negotiating conference with a real property matter, and the successor agency board received a report and gave direction. There's no final action to report at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. And we will proceed with the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Lenart.
Our heads. Father in heaven, we thank you for your watch care over us and your love for us. We pray your blessing upon the people of this community and even in this world. As we go through this crisis, you will, healing hands will be all over, all over the world. We pray also that your presence will be here during this meeting so that we come to the proper decisions for the best benefit of our citizens. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Manager, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
At this point, we'll open up any public, for any public comment. Anyone in the public, either here in the room or online, that wishes to speak on an item that is not agendized may raise their hand or come forward. I'm looking over at the IT folks, and I don't see anybody wishing to speak. Okay, nobody, we will move on. If there are any conflicts of interest, those will be disclosed as they come up, and we'll move into our scheduled items. Item number one is a public hearings by public, a public hearing by Public Works. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the city council. This item have to do with the new state law with regard to environmental impact on the traffic generated by the proposed projects. In the past, the city used level of service, which is LOS, to determine the traffic impact on proposed project within the development, any, any project within the city. The, the state have, have came out with a new procedure called vehicle, vehicle mile travel, or VMT. And this, this analyze the, the number of miles that the vehicle would travel from the project to like, from the house to work or from the house to shopping center, if their proposed shopping center within the city. How to get do that, there's a pretty complicated equation that I'm not quite understand, but it's consultant that, that specialized in doing this. So, so state require that the city have to approve these procedures so that when they have a new project in town, as part of their environment impact report, they have to do vehicle mile travel as part of traffic analysis. In addition to the level of service, which is LOS, which is required by our MCV. So therefore, our city especially, we have to do both analysis. So tonight, we request that the city adopt the vehicle mile travel procedures and, and adopt a local guideline to be implemented as part of the CECL process. And this is a public hearing. I'm sorry, can I keep it short? But, but SBCTA, they're a leading agency, they have numerous workshops, and, and, and you probably heard many already, so.
When does it take effect?
July 1st, which is our effect, but since we don't have any project coming up, we, we.
It wa, it's been in effect since July 1st, or it comes up in 2020?
No, this, this, this past July.
Oh, okay.
But, but.
And that was gonna be my next question, does this affect any of our current?
No, no, that's why we haven't done it.
Do, do we have to adopt this because the legislature said we did, or because Gavin said we have to do it?
Does it matter?
Because I'm just, because I wanna know who's, I wanna know who I'm gonna stand aside to let them vote this in. Since I'm not, since I have no discretion.
Legislature, the state.
Okay, so.
Not the governor.
So James Ramos will vote in my stead?
He probably did. So, and this is again, public hearing, so you can open.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. If anyone wants to speak on this very exciting topic, or if they would rather contact their local legislature or directly to the governor's office, they are welcome to do that, as apparently we have zero control over this. Not seeing anybody? Any more comments from the dais? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion.
What if it dies?
I, I, I move Council Bill R dash two zero two zero dash three seven.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second.
The motion is to accept, to, excuse me, adopt Council Bill number R dash twenty twenty dash thirty seven, adopting the vehicle miles traveled thresholds of significance for purposes of analyzing traffic, transportation impacts under the California Environmental Quality Act and to adopt the local guidelines for implementing the California Environmental Quality Act and approving the city manager to periodically update as needed. Councilman Jindal?
Aye.
Councilman Lenart? Councilman Rigsby?
I'm gonna exercise my discretion and vote no.
Mayor Pro Tempore Daley?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
I will vote no also. But it does carry?
Thank you, it does carry, thank you.
Moving on to the consent calendar. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull items four, five, and six.
Okay. Any other items that you guys would like to pull? If not, well, let's look at number four.
Deanna, I'm just, I'm looking at the last page of the treasures report, or, yeah, and showing the trend lines, and our trending has been down for the last, last little while, and I'm just wondering if that's something we should be concerned about at this point? Or is this predictable? Help me understand, because it's a downward trend, isn't one that I feel good about.
We are, because of the pandemic and the, the application of some of the, the sales tax things that the governor allowed for sales tax to be deferred, and then some of the other deferments, we are seeing a drop in certain, in revenue, mainly sales tax. But we should be getting, if, if it was generated, it will be paid at some point, we anticipate. But normally, on a normal basis, at the start of the year, we do see we're spending more money because we do have heavier payments that are, we pay our, our insurance payment goes out. We have debt service go out, and then we don't really see true property tax until November, and then we start seeing January. That's when the bulk of the revenue starts coming in.
So I think what I hear you saying is that we don't like to see the trend, but it's understandable, and you're not overly concerned.
Not at this point. It, it, sales tax will concern me in a, in a few months here, if we don't start seeing it turn around.
Okay, good enough for me, thank you.
Is, is this in line with our projection for our deficit?
It, it, again, like I mentioned, the, the second quarter, we got hit pretty hard. It's, it's down close to ninety thousand dollars from last year, second quarter. So, the sales tax came down from same quarter last year.
And again, that's attributable to?
To COVID, yes, yes, yes. That's April, May, and June of this year, so.
Okay, tough stuff. Number five.
Ah, number five, okay, thank you. Um, let's see here. The two numbers that jumped, I mean, they're, you know, I go through these things. The two numbers that jumped out at me is that a year to date, we had thirty-four structural fires. It, or, help me understand what that is, is that? Is that houses, is it storage sheds, or what? Because that seems like a lot.
Yeah, structure fires can be kind of a, a broad category. So typically, what would be categorized as a structure fire is a house type of thing. A, um, something like the hospital, strip mall would be categorized under a commercial fire. Usually a shed. Those could, depending on how it was called in, and that sometimes will be great because what it's called in is, it would have to get reclassified at some point to be corrected. So if it was a shed, a large shed, it could be come in as a structure fire because it was called in, because someone thought it was that. But also understand that these are calls and not necessarily actual fires. So you can call in what you think is a structure fire, they can respond there, and it's, turns out.
It may or may not be a structural fire.
May or may might be in the end. And then also, some of those are structure fire responses that we go on, but not necessarily in our city. So if we run in San Bernardino, Redlands, Colton, that'll be a structure fire response for us, but not necessarily generated in our city.
Now, I don't, I don't have a trend line here. Is thirty-four high, or is that about typical at this point?
Pretty consistent, you know, we run, you know, several actual fires outside of our city. That's where we get most of our active structure fires are actually moved.
Are outside of the city?
Yes, yeah, we were, we, axle structure fires, we usually run on more outside the city than inside the city, which helps justify for us working together with our cooperators. We're smaller, we would require a lot of help once we get a fire, but we help others more often. And so it's kind of a balance, we need people's help, but they need ours.
But we still record it.
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
Was that the only one on that, you had a question?
Uh, no, I also had a question on refuse fire. I mean, I think I could define refuse fire, but forty-nine seems high, too.
Yeah, so refuse could be in, any sort of type of fire that's outdoors, that would be considered. So it could be very small, a trash can can be a refuse fire to anything larger, a large dump area and something like that. So anything that kind of falls under that general category would be kind of fall into a, a refuse fire.
Okay, so forty-nine doesn't set off any alarms?
No, it doesn't stand out as, as, it's too high, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
How do you categorize popcorn?
Popcorn?
Usually as false alarms, because their microwave popcorn causes more fires than anything else in our city.
Yeah, so like, we would, we would probably see a lot of commercial, you could see a lot of commercial alarms on there. And our response for commercial structure fires that turn out to be somebody stuffed alarm burning the popcorn, or. I remember, you know, some in hotels, from where I worked, there was a hotel and a showerhead, or the spring, the, the smoke detector was too close to the shower, and steam from the shower would set off all the time, we ran responses all the time, and it was just steam from the shower. And so we had to finally get them to kind of relocate that smoke detector, because.
Had to have a come-to-Jesus talk with the fire inspector.
Yeah, exactly, so it was, it was a bad location of it, and so it would come down as a lot of responses, but really, they're all kind of nothing. And so you got, you gotta kind of get through and see kind of where things kind of fall on that.
No, I appreciate that, I just wanted to know if these were outliers or not.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we spend about forty-five dollars just to dispatch. So if you call in and it requires a dispatch, it's forty-five dollars. That's, that's before you even start up the the apparatus.
Okay, number six?
Number six. This may be a challenge of, of semantics for me, but when we talk about law, law enforcement services contract between the county of San Bernardino and the city of Loma Linda, appropriate expenditures and increased revenues in the amount of three hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred. And I read the rest of it, so I kind of understand where it's coming from. But three hundred and twenty-two thousand in revenues is where I'm stuck.
Okay, so.
How is this a revenue?
So, so this is, this is, I can explain, this is accounting. Okay, if you remember, last August, you approved, increased the contract to, to increase police services to the hospital from eighteen to twenty-four.
Twenty-four, right.
Okay, so the difference in that, in that, from eighteen to twenty-four, six hour, is you have to accept the revenue from the hospital, and you have to put into the expenditure to pay for the sheriff, and this is.
It's a net balance.
Correct, and this is just.
For the city.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm good then.
It's just accounting that, that Diana say, have to make sure that we accept the revenue, and have to put in it, in expenditures.
That's where I was confused, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on the consent calendar?
I thought we were paying Phil Duper another three hundred thousand dollars a year, and I was kind of starting to stress on.
That's a little low for my worth, but. Uh-oh.
It's good enough for Bill, it's good enough for Phil.
Okay, moving along. Uh, do we have a motion to move the consent calendar? We have a motion? And it dies for lack of, no, I'm joking.
Second.
And we have a second, okay, first and a second, Madam Clerk.
The motion is to approve the items on the city council consent calendar. Councilman Jindal?
Aye.
Councilman Lenart?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tempore Daley?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much.
Okay, this is the one that everybody is tuning in for, item number twelve. Council Bill R dash two zero two zero, zero dash three eight regarding adjustment of school district boundaries to incorporate all areas of the city of Loma Linda.
Well, it had city attorney on the agenda, so I will introduce it, as, as you recall at the last meeting. The city attorney and staff were asked to prepare and return a draft resolution for your consideration, which would start the process of, of requesting that the school districts and the county board consider changing the school district boundaries to move any portion of the city of Loma Linda into the Redlands School District, which is currently not included in that district. And that would affect part of the Colton School District boundaries as well. So that is before you tonight for your consideration. You may certainly amend the draft resolution as you see fit. You may approve it, or, or not take action as you see fit. But if you do take action, this would merely start a very lengthy process of public hearings and, and review and analysis by the districts and by the county board. All those hearings would take place outside of your purview, although as, as any affected citizens, the council members could individually participate in those hearings or even take a further action supporting change in the boundaries when those come up for final consideration by the, the other entities. But, but this action tonight might be the only action you ever take in this regard, and then it would continue on with the other jurisdictions for consideration and final action.
Councilman Daley, at, at the last city council meeting, you asked for the, the boundary.
Yes.
So, so a map, so this here, this red line is a city boundary, and area in, in red here, this is the area that currently within the Colton School District. So this, this, the one in red, so. The rest is in Redland School District.
And so what we're doing, and this was my concern last month, is that we would be moving all of the little bit that's Colton District School District from Loma Linda into the Redland School District.
Yes, sir.
But it would be for the whole city. Yeah, but, but that amounts to the whole city, because everything east of that is already in Redland School District.
Correct.
That was my principal issue, so I'm, I'm satisfied with that. The question that I have is, has there been any discussion? Because we had a caller last week, or I'm sorry, last month, who was concerned about the overload in the Redland School District, as I recall. Has there been any discussion with the Redland School District so that we have some sense as to what their position on this would be, so we're not just making a presumption that they would welcome a few more Loma Linda students to Redland School District?
Last month, I did make a phone call to the Redlands School District Superintendent, and, and, and the staff had much told me is, has, has not been done for many, many, many years. And it is, is very difficult, because to be able to transfer the district first, the, the Colton School District Board had to approve to give away the, the.
Right.
The area first.
Right.
And then would take it to the Redland School District, Redland School District Board had to approve to accept that.
Right.
In addition to that, the revenue, they had to give away the revenue from, from all the students.
From Colton to Redlands.
To, to Redland School District. And, and so.
Those are my, those are my concerns.
Right, and, and, and so I just understand the procedure, but, but they have not tell me yes or no, because they have to go through the board, I, I, we don't talk.
Because it seems to me that the sporting way to handle this would be to at least have a dialogue before we spring it on their Redland School District Board. I don't know who would do that, but that's, that's my sense, is I don't, I don't like surprises, so it would seem to me that we should at least talk with the Redlands.
I did.
And see if this is conceivable to them or not.
I, I did talk to the superintendent, I, I tried to call a Colton School District three times, and nobody answered the phone.
I think what's almost impossible, though, with that, is that this, these decisions wouldn't be made by the superintendent, these would be
Correct, by the borders.
Board members.
And it would require.
You know what I'm saying?
It would require a Brown Act violation.
Yeah, no.
To get to take the temperature on this.
Correct, right, my, my point is, we can't even communicating with the, with the superintendent, it's not even his decision. It would be the, these various boards, and so.
And I recognize that, but we could get a readout and at least be a good neighbor in talking with him about it before, him or her, about it before we just spring this on the board.
I think that's what he, what he did by letting him.
Yes. So I, I did men, I did mention to Redlands, I tried to reach out to Colton, but they don't answer the phone, so.
Okay, which may be why we want to move from Colton to Redlands. It's, it's a protocol issue with me.
Yes, I understand, that's what I like to do as, as a, as a city manager, as a courtesy to our neighbor.
Sure, sure.
And, and, and I want to give a little heads up what's, what's going on, and it's not gonna be a surprise, but.
And that's my point.
Yes, I.
And, and I want to be careful as a member of the Loma Linda City Council to raise potential false hopes with citizens that want this very badly, is the sense I get. And we're saying, oh yeah, we'll do it, but we haven't even talked with them yet. With the Redlands, or Colton. We had a minimal conversation.
Well, Dr. Rigsby did speak to Colton.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I spoke to the mayor of Colton, who has no jurisdiction over the school district, but my feeling is, you know, in response to your concerns, my feeling is that ossified and oxidized old processes need a little squirt from an oil can once in a while. You know, you have to, you have to work out your amendment process, you have to test its validity by exercising it once in a while. So I don't feel any complications about springing something on them that, you know, that they're, they have a process in place to handle. So, you know, it's like an appeals court saying, boy, you didn't give us a heads up on that appeal, but that's why there is an appeals court. But my question on this map is, it doesn't seem to comport with the map that they published on their website, which had a straight line with no cutouts. So where did you get this map?
We, yes, the map is kind of straight line, but. Let me see. This is the map that they gave to us.
The reason I ask that is because I lived in that border zone. I lived, I lived in the Colton School District, across the street from the Redland School District, and this says I was in the Redland School District, and I was told otherwise.
So I, I, it's hard to zoom in, like, if you go online and look at the exact map, but if we go based off of this one, we literally have, so if you look at the north end, it's the same complex of houses, and part of it is in Redlands, and then the majority of it is in Loma Linda.
From the same complex?
That same, it's a mobile.
Yeah, the mobile home park, they're, they're, they're seniors, okay, so it really doesn't matter, but.
So I, I think a lot of this is.
But it is odd that.
People that it doesn't really affect, because we have another senior housing complex to the south.
And there's also, that line could go right through the middle of a trailer, so it depends on which bedroom you're in.
And the map, the, the map that they provide on the website doesn't show, hardly show Loma Linda at all. It, it, it does show a little bit, so.
I think regardless, we have, we have a, we have a group of individuals, a large group, which is all of that housing complex up there. A vast majority of them submitted a request to us to move this forward. So that's a vast majority of that whole area that submitted that request, because if you include that complex compared to what else is in there, I mean.
Yeah, it's, it, this line is supposed to go straight up.
Yeah, but still, there's a, most of, what's the name of that development? Forget the name of it again.
Laurel Heights.
Laurel, is it Laurel Heights? Yeah, is that where it is?
Should be Laurel Heights.
Yeah, that, that, we had, what, sixty percent of the residents there in Laurel Heights asked us to, to move this forward, so. I say we move it forward and, and let the chips fall.
Yeah, it's a straight line.
Yeah, straight line, yeah.
And we'll sweeten the deal, and we'll tell Redland School District that there's some potential up-and-coming football stars.
Yeah.
That live in Laurel Heights.
That's right. So, I would like to add a whereas, I don't have the language, but I have the intent. One of the whereas's is that there was an arbitrary straight line bisecting the western tip of Loma Linda, and I think that was, the arbitrariness of it deserves correction. Something along those lines. You know, if, if you, if you take a line and just go, you know, cutting right through houses and all this kind of stuff, it seems like kind of a brainless way to do it, and this would be a chance to overturn that. And I think that would actually be the most come, to me, it would be the most compelling argument to make the change. Because just because a bunch of people don't want to pay your high fees, I think they're gonna probably turn a deaf ear to that. And I think that it would, being cast as arbitrary and, and not respecting community borders, not respecting community values and, and the cohesion of a community among it. You know, I think that has a little bit more of a, uh, let's say a less threatening tone to it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good, I'm good with that, but, you know, I was just thinking, I was wondering when, when all these borders were established, and if that was actually the city limits, which came first, the chicken or the egg? So were the, were the Colton School District boundaries in place before we annexed further to the west? Or we always had those borderlines, you know what I mean?
Well, we'll let them do that investigation.
I think back in the day, that housing complex wasn't, Laurel Heights wasn't even there.
Well, yeah, no, 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 it, it's not that old, obviously, yes. But my question is, did we annex it when that was built, or did we always go up to that point? Because that's probably part of the issue.
Kick it down the road, couple decades.
And then I have a conflict of interest question for our attorney. If my in-law's property is in the Colton District, do I have a conflict?
No.
Good.
It's not of financial interest.
If he is upset and sad that he potentially could have sent his kids to Redland School District ten years ago, does he, no, I'm joking.
Well, the, the tennis court that I could possibly take a share in inheriting might be affected by the school district.
So we could add a whereas, the current boundary line arbitrarily divides. So we could add a whereas the current boundary line arbitrarily divides a portion of the city of Loma Linda.
Yeah, I agree with that logic, too. But I just, I don't know that it was intentional. I'll bet you, not knowing that history, but I'll I'll bet we annexed as that stuff was kind of built out, and probably we overlaid on top of that. It was probably set there way before.
And I understand that school districts don't care what city they're in, just like the post office doesn't seem to care.
Right.
But it's at least it's an argument that's not just based on
Makes it clear.
finances.
Yeah, well, no, I don't think we should ever argue that, but yes, I agree. Any other questions? All right, to move this meeting along, do we have any interest in a motion?
A move that we approve Council Bill R dash twenty twenty dash thirty eight with the amendment stipulated by Dr. Rigsby.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second.
The motion is to adopt Council Bill number R dash twenty twenty dash thirty eight regarding adjustment of school district boundaries to incorporate all areas of the city of Loma Linda into the Redlands School District with the addition of an additional whereas current boundaries arbitrarily dissect the city of Loma Linda. Councilman Gendal?
Dissect, right? Bisect.
Yeah, it's not vivisection, it's bisect. Except dissection. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Per temporary Daley?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
It passes unanimously.
Can you bring up, is the map still handy, or is it a pain? If not, I was just going to say, so potentially, what's interesting is we run into that same deal on the east side, where all of that sphere of influence will end up annexing further east. Now, obviously, that's all in the Col, or the Redlands School District already, but 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 you see, I bet you that's probably how that happened initially. Anyway, okay, moving on to new business. At our number thirteen, we need to appoint some people to the Historical Commission.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, just a brief background, you have, I think you have the application from the three candidates. We had Chairman of the Historic Commission, Jim Ship, resigned, I want to say, two years ago, two and a half years ago, a long time ago. We've kind of moved along. The vice the vice chairman, Mr. Stewart, has filled in as the chairman, but we are running one person short on that commission, and we do, the commission asks that we do replace that that individual. I don't know if anybody is on that would want to to make a statement via Zoom, or typically, I think you guys have asked questions or listened to statements, but those are the the three candidates. Any questions?
Do looking over at IT guys, do we have any of the candidates online?
No.
Yeah, and and I just know it's been kind of the desire of this council in the in the past to usually have appearances, but, yes, sir.
I could ask a prefatory question, but I'm just going to make a motion. I I am incredibly impressed by all three applicants, and I move that we accept all three and rent a larger room.
So I I do have a point of order question, and I actually think, and I actually know, I I know the second applicant, Mr. Frank, he is actually, I know, very, very involved in the Adobe project and some other historical things, and he has attended the historical meetings. The only procedural question I have is that he lives outside the city, so what are our rules related to that?
That is the one, actually, that and the Connected Community Committee are the the two committees that do not require residents in the city. So we have a couple of members that are bring unique historical perspective and experience that are not residents of the city, but are are tied by their interest and background. And obviously, Mr. Frank, whose ancestors owned that Adobe building, has a very deep emotional attachment to to that specific project.
So if we accept all three, that brings us up to eleven members still. It's still an odd number.
From from managing that as as the staff representative, you know, typically, we've got an older group, and they getting getting everybody together all at once can be challenging, so having a few more probably wouldn't hurt. And they're they're not really an unruly group to handle at that at that number.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, how come it took two and a half years before we?
We never got around to it. I mean, we just, life went on, everything was great, to Mr. Ship's credit, and he was one of the, I believe he was the one of the founding members of the Historic Commission. He spearheaded that portion of the code, and he's left such a deep and lasting imprint that, you know, it's taken this long to realize that the guy is gone, even though he just didn't come to meetings anymore, because he he has left such an impression on the the committee.
Just looking at our municipal code, we do have a provision that specifies the membership shall be nine members. We could amend that quite easily, but we're limited to nine currently.
So we we have considered, we have on our agenda appointment to the Historical Commission, and if the Historical Commission's too small, I think that would be included in that agendized.
We would need to amend the the municipal code to allow for a larger commission.
The question is, can we do that now? Because I I think that's kind of the will.
We have to do that by ordinance, and so it would take the normal introduction of the written ordinance, and then five days for second reading, and then thirty days to become effective.
Then I amend I amend my motion to say that we'll just take them in order. I move that we appoint Wesley James now and appoint the others pending increase in size of the
I I was going to suggest you appoint the others as alternates, then they could participate if anybody else does not attend, and then we could proceed to amend the ordinance to make them full voting members at a later date.
It seems like there's no rush. We already waited two and a half years. Why don't we just wait till we amend and then appoint all three then?
As long as it happens by January.
Why? What's magical about January?
Hmm?
What's magical about January?
Well, I just want to, I don't want them to wait another two and a half years to amend.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 but but I do think, but given the process, we'd have to have two more meetings before we make it official, right?
That's fine. That's fine.
Yeah, and I'm 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 in agreeance. I'd rather do all three at the same time, so we don't pick anybody over anybody else.
I just happen to know Wesley James, so I was trying to sneak it in.
And and I and I know Mr. Frank, and I know he he's very passionate about the Adobe, and I think would be a good addition related to 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 some of that stuff.
I agree. His passion is palpable, so I I like him. I like him a lot.
He's very outspoken.
And any any statements he made that would tend to make us feel uncomfortable, I was very comfortable with those statements.
Could we appoint them all as alternates and then move them up when the time comes?
I don't know if there's any meetings pending. I just hate to have the idea they can't go to meetings or anything when they really want to go.
Well, I don't I don't think it meets very often.
Actually, they're, of all our groups, they are a fairly active group. There are specific projects that are required to come before them, and anything, as a courtesy, anything that happens in Area D and probably in the Santa Mateo Creek, even though that's not required, even though it may not be required to come before them by code, we do bring before them as a courtesy to them, because they are deeply involved in that, and and also things around the university which are occurring. So I'd I'd be very supportive of having three alternates.
Who are the other members?
What's, excuse me?
Who are the other members?
It's on it's on the list here.
Yeah.
Georgia Hodgkin, Fred Ramos.
Michael Stewart, Fred Ramos, Dick Wiley, Georgia Hodgkins.
Well, my very active folks, anyway.
Dick Schaefer.
Yeah, Dick Schaefer, Dr. Kaufman, Bill Kaufman. I'm trying to remember.
Laurie Guettiis.
He's not a resident, is he? He's not. We, like I said, we have a couple of people that are, they just have the insight into the community or the passion for the community, and
Are you good with his idea?
They're they're, they do all contribute in their their own way, and
[laughing]
So I'd I'd be perfectly fine as as the city, the city rep on that to to take them as alternates and then
Initially, and then we'll let's move forward with the change?
That would get, that would allow them the voice early on as well and get them involved.
Do we have a motion? Okay. Dr. Rigsby, are you okay with that?
All right, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept these three as alternates, with the caveat, we are going to move to officially enlarge that group to eleven. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second.
Okay, the motion is to appoint the three applicants as alternates until such time as we have modified the historical preservation ordinance to increase the number of members on the committee, correct?
It was eleven.
Councilman Gendal?
Aye.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Per temporary Daley?
No.
Pardon?
No.
No? And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to next year's calendar.
It is really just for information purposes, the, we reserve the second and fourth Tuesdays for regular meeting dates, attempting to schedule business for the first Tuesday, and reserving that fourth Tuesday if business necessitates a second meeting, and just more for your information as to the dates of those meetings.
And when you say first Tuesday, you mean the second Tuesday?
Pardon?
When you said the first Tuesday, you meant the first meeting, which is the second Tuesday?
You are correct. I meant the second, correct, the second Tuesday would be the first meeting of the month. Thank you.
Yeah.
So this is essentially a receive and file, correct?
Right.
Okay. All right, moving on, do we have any reports of council members?
I can bring up one point. I've been deluged recently, probably fifteen people complaining, fourteen if you count me, to me, about upon opening the water bill. People are just incensed about how their water rates bills have just gone up. Somebody came to my office with a whole bunch of research with surrounding cities and claimed that our rates were higher than any surrounding city. We get quicker, higher into the next level than any, you know, the top tier than any other city and so forth. Now, I don't know if that's true or not. If it's not true, then, I don't know, maybe we should maybe communicate with the people and tell them why their rates, why their water bills are going so high or something.
I brought this up last year. I brought this up last year. What happens is, if you have a large property, you're artificially really, really punished by the the rates that our consultant came up with. And it had extremely small Tier One, extremely small Tier Two, and a and a very big Tier Three, which raised the rates of large property owners by, you know, several fold. And I don't think that was the intent. The intent was to severely restrict overutilization, not just overtax and overcharge normal utilization on a very large property.
And in addition to that, if if they give me a call and give me an address, I behalf, I will, I plan to present this item. Now that we have a smart meter, we can actually print out the the water consumption.
Yeah.
And and if the goal is eventually they can be able to lock on to their computer and 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 print out or view their water consumption, that that's the goal. But right now, we can print them out for them.
Because some of some of the people have quite large homes, I'll buy and give you that, but there are some who have very small homes and claim they have very small footprints in terms of water.
Yes.
And they're just saying, what happened?
That's that's why, that's why it's so nice to have this four G meter that we can actually print them out, and and that's a good example. My aunt, she lived all by herself here at Lawton, and her water bill is higher than mine, and and so I actually print them out, the the water consumption, and it turned out that
Did she have a leak?
No, the the irrigation, they they turned on the irrigation for for a long time, so so, but.
I've I've also done consulting to people who complained, and I went to their house, and I and I checked all of their sprinklers, and some people just water a whole lot.
Yes.
Yeah.
So so that's why, that's the exact reason why we 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 have this four G meter that we can actually print out, and the goal is eventually the homeowner can actually lock on to their system and and to see that their water consumption. So we'd be happy to do it. Right now, they can call finance department, and we can print them out and and mail it to them, so.
Yeah. Are are our rates higher than other surrounding cities?
No, no.
Because that's the allegation.
No.
Well, on average, our rates are not higher, but for someone who falls in that category, they're very high, but that was part of the intent. Like I said, the intent was to suppress overutilization, not to overcharge people with a large property who do average utilization. So, you know, it's it's the same problem you have with the tiered charging for electricity. If you have a big house, you get into Tier Five very quickly, but then you can eliminate that problem by just going by a time of day charge, and then that eliminates that that problem, so you're not, there's no tiering at all on the time of day charging. But but there's a, there's another possibility, I don't know if I'm allowed to mention it, but there is an agricultural rate
Yes.
that is lower. So if you can show, if you can somehow get two meters on your house, one for your yard that's agricultural and one for your house that's on the regular thing, then you can reduce your bill by about at least a third to a half.
If you have a certain sized lot, right, doesn't it mean it's larger than a certain size?
To make it worth it, yes. Because you, yes, because the property owner is is responsible for installing the wall lateral and meters, the second meters, so the cost is is quite a bit, so.
And that's the first way that I'm hearing from people, so I just want to bring it up.
Yeah, I'd be happy to email me. I'd be happy to to talk to them, yes.
And I think we should offer the consulting service to go out and check what their sprinklers are. There aren't that many, fifteen, maybe ten for you. It's easier than than dealing with insurrection.
Because, you know, you know Kirk Swacker, he's on our budget committee, he's on our public education committee. He complained to me, the exact same thing, and I print him out and took it over to his house and showed it to him, and he went and yelled at the the landscape, the guy who 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 increased the irrigation, the timing on the irrigation.
The ones I've talked to, I have a half acre, and there are people using like ten times as much as I do for a little lot, and it just, you know, creating a rice paddy.
All right. I had a question and a few complaints I've received about multi-unit homes and the smoking policy that we have. So I was hoping we could get some clarification. I'm going through our municipal code. First of all, am I correct in understanding that we have an X amount of residences in each multi-unit home that are designated as non-smoking? Second, do we have any consequences if if residents are breaking that, or are we holding owners accountable? And third, is there any mechanism with which we're doing that?
I'm going to answer as well as as I can off the top of my head, because I'd have to, I'd have to dig back into the code to to be sure. I believe that in the multifamily, there are a percentage of smoking units allowed. I don't know what that percentage is, but they are designated as smoking units, so people can't smoke in them. There's also, and once again, I'm off the top of my head on this, multifamily units are supposed to have a designated outdoor smoking area as well. Multifamily units are supposed to have a designated outdoor smoking area as well. So where people can, you know, you can smoke in your house, or you can go smoke someplace outside that. That was your, your first question. Um, what was your second one?
My second one is if we have someone that's breaking it, um, what can we decide on that, how we determine?
We have never cited anybody for smoking. It becomes highly problematic. First, um, what, what you do in your house becomes, uh, you know, is your business, is one, one view of it. Then it becomes, how does it become enforceable? Do we kick down your door and take your cigar? At what point does it trigger? Your neighbor calls and says, you're smoking, you say, no, I'm not. How do we prove that anything happened? It, it just becomes the, it, the, the code is for all intents and purposes unenforceable. That's not the answer you wanna hear, but that's, I'm, I'm giving you the truth, okay?
Right, so that, so that brings that question, like why was this code created? Because it offers like a false sense of security to some residents, uh, but if we have a code that's not enforceable, it just.
We, we have a, we have a no camping code too that violates state, state laws, unenforceable. Um, the, the smoking, you know, boy, now I'm gonna go way off the reservation. The, uh, the smoking ordinance was created to help sustain and help set example for a healthy community. You know, it's, for the most part voluntary, for the most part, we have reasonable people who are reasonable neighbors, and if you ask your neighbor to knock it off, they do, um, in, in the city. And we have people that are respectful of each other for the most part, and that helps reinforce and define that. You know, how, how do we, how do we, how do we enforce respect among somebody else? So, I don't know. But that, it really was created as a way to set an example and to set a pattern for people to follow.
Dr. Riggsby?
I, I wanted to clarify my understanding of the code, okay? Help me with this. I understood that there were in a multi-building, multi-unit, multifamily apartment complex, that there were to be buildings designated as non-smoking buildings. And then other buildings were allowed to have smoking in them, but were not, I didn't, I didn't, I don't remember it. I don't remember it's being by unit. I remember it being by building.
I, I don't.
Because of the shared, because of the shared air circulation in apartment buildings.
I don't know about building or unit. I do know that it is, there are units that are problems. I know that I routinely deal, and the only reason I'm, I'm even aware of this, of any conversance on this section of the code off the top of my head, is that there's two or three tenants over at the Springs that are grandfathered in. So they were living in those, those units, smoking there before the, the ordinance was enacted. They continue to live there and smoke there, and their neighbors complain about them.
But, but see, I, I interpret that, my, my understanding of it is that it is the job of the supervisor and the owner to designate buildings non-smoking, that it was not intended for citation of individual tenants. It was intended to be enforced against the owner, manager of the apartment complex.
That is, I understand that we're, you know, it was not designed for us to go out and write people tickets and, and take away their cigars.
So that's why it was passed, that's why I voted for it, cause I didn't want individual citations of, of, of people. It had to be like, when you sign the lease, you understand this is a non-smoking unit, and, or you sign the lease, you understand this is a smoking unit.
Yeah, this ordinance was adopted back in two thousand eight and.
I was around.
I have not reviewed it, to my recollection, since then, but, uh, it does have in section eight point ten point zero five five provisions, uh, providing for smoke-free multi-unit residences. And, um, the, the designation of non-smoking units and smoking units. Uh, I believe seventy percent of the units have to be non-smoking, and there, there are a whole variety of provisions that apply to the multifamily situations. But as far as, as, as Connor had mentioned, there is a, a provision where an existing tenant can request that his unit not be designated as non-smoking as long as that person lives there within the residence. But there are provisions that allow, that require lease terms be imposed upon the tenants to enforce these provisions. And if the landlord fails to do the things that are required by the code to designate the appropriate units and smoking areas and non-smoking areas, then the landlord could be liable to the tenant, uh, to the tenant for any damages the tenant suffers. And there is, to some extent, an, a private enforcement right on the part of the aggrieved tenant who is being subjected to secondhand smoke. So it was intentionally written, as I recall, to allow the aggrieved parties to deal with the issue between themselves, rather than necessarily involving city code enforcement or citations to deal with what would be a civil matter. But again, I haven't reviewed the entire chapter for some time, but I would advise that any persons who are having an issue with this, review, uh, chapter eight point ten and, uh, take a look at what the rules are, see if the rules are being followed in their particular, uh, complex, and then address those issues with the landlord first, and, uh, and then we could take a look at it, uh, after that if necessary.
Did I answer your question or you? Okay. Anybody else? Any reports of officers? Can't let the water thing die, huh? We gotta talk about it some more.
Well, from time to time, I would like to update the city council on, on our water system. And, and, uh, and especially we have a, a new council member that also on the San Valade Municipal Water District Board, so, so this, this, this way, when you go have a meeting with them, you, you can tell them that where our water coming from, which is the same Bunker Hill basin that, that all the members are, are sucking the water out of that basin.
And the City of Riverside.
Yes, and City of Riverside, Riverside, yes.
Who's like the biggest sucker.
So.
I mean, you know, that sucks water out.
So, so right now, we have, we have number of water wells, uh, six, eight, eight of them. Of which, three of them we not use, and the reason we not use this one, it's multi-view number four, have high fluoride. This one have high arsenic, so, but majority of, of our wells are pumped from, oh, by the way, this, this wells are in the City of San Marino boundary. But, but because we have the water right, we can pump the water in that area, okay? So this is Cooley.
And each area where the well is located is a island of Loma Linda.
Yes, yes, yes. Except the, the latest one, this one here. But yes, it's all in City of Loma Linda.
Now, does measure B apply there?
Luckily, yeah, it does. But luckily, that generate any traffic.
Wow, that's very interesting.
Do we need to pass an initiative to extend measure B to that area?
Uh, no, no, well.
Okay, go ahead, talk about the new one. Well, when you get to it.
So, so this is where the, the water coming from is the wells along the north side of freeway. And, and, and right now during the summer month, uh, we pump about six million gallon per day. And in a winter month, we pump about three point five million gallon per day. And I, I wrote down here that the Olympic side swimming pool is about half million gallon. So, so we, we use quite a bit of water in, in, in the summertime, just twelve swimming pool. I mean, Olympic side swimming pool. Now, so.
Can you go back?
Yes, sir.
You were saying the, the latest, no, yeah, the latest.
Come on. Oh, you touching it. Okay, back, back one slide, please.
That was awesome.
We're doing the same time, I'm doing out of here.
Awesome, you guys, keep doing that.
Okay.
You talked about, that's a new site?
This, this, this one over here.
Right there where the, where San Bernardino's planning the master planned gated, gated community high-end homes right there?
Not high-end, it's a similar to this one right here.
I, I just, but it's a gated community.
It's a small, it's a small lot subdivision, yes.
I read the paper.
Yes.
Okay. So what, when did we acquire that?
That one i- is probably, uh, uh, twelve years ago, thirteen years ago. I'm, I was here, so I did it. And it used to be the old well site from the City of San Bernardino, and we bought it and we drilled new wells.
But that's not part of Loma Linda.
Correct. All this little one is a city on, kinda in the City of Loma Linda. Okay? Next, please. Okay, so out of this well, we, we pump the water up into reservoir up in the hill. It range from six hundred thou- six hundred thousand gallon reservoir to eight million gallon reservoir. But in the meantime, we, we pump the water from here up Mountain View, we have couple booster pump to pump it up to the hill. Same thing on Richardson, we have a booster pump over here on Anderson and, and pump it up to the, to the reservoir at the end of Anderson. We also have couple intertie with the City of San Bernardino, here, here, and with the City of Redlands over here. And the University of Loma Linda, they have their own wells and, and reservoir, and their reservoir is sit next to, to our well at on Anderson Way, and we have an intertie with them. So in case that they run out of water, we can help them with water. Their wells itself is right across from Academy, kind of at the southeast corner of Anderson and flood control channel there. Okay, so that, that's our reservoir. So what happened is we pump the water at night where the electricity rate is a little cheaper, and we fill up the tank. And during the day, the water's gravity flow to all the houses. With exception of the house that higher than the reservoir, they have a small booster pump to pump to those houses. Next, please. So, uh, uh, tonight, we, we did talk about the, uh, measure, I mean, area D. So this is Lina home, this is KB home, and this is the, the VA, so all of this is gonna be new development. We also did talk about the, uh, the proposed project by, uh, the, this is, uh, usually owned by Dr. Kunehara. This is Beaumont, this is Redlands Boulevard, I'm, I'm sorry, Barton Road, this is Korean Church. So there's a new subdivision that proposed. So with all of this, we're gonna have almost thirteen hundred units of single family and apartment coming into town. Okay, so this all require waters. So next slide, please. So what we are doing is, there's couple proposed project that, that in, in, in the work. For example, we, we are working on putting new, uh, uh, about one point eight million gallon reservoir, uh, behind the dog park. But it's gonna be behind the hill, so you're not gonna see it from, from the street. So, and then we're gonna extend the existing twelve inch water main at, at the end of, by the railroad track here. Go across the railroad track, go across the counter flood control channel and tie to the, the new water main that was just put in on, I think it was Nevada Street.
Is.
No, no, we're just gonna tie it. I'm just gonna hang the pipe on the, on the bridge. So this will provide water, kind of loop system, a loop system to serve this subdivision and go all the way to here. Okay, so, in addition to, to new water main and new reservoir, uh, last year, we extend our fiber optic across, uh, Richardson, along Richardson, across the freeway and tie to the existing wells on Cooley. And we are working with the IVDA, they are working on this, this crossing here on Mountain View Avenue at the flood control channel and the railroad track, so we work with them to put in a fiber optic conduit. And then the City of Loma Linda will work with the City of San Bernardino to put another fiber optic conduit across the freeway, through the channel and up to Cooley, so now we have a loop system. What this fiber optic does is control our wells to our, um, water tank. So when our water tank full, then they stop, it tell the, the well to stop pumping. Before, we were using a radio wave and have a lot of problems interfering to the high wind and, and so forth. So now with, with this fiber optic, it has been working great. So we are in the process of putting another line along Mountain View, so we'll create a, a loop system for the fiber optic. Next, please. Okay, a couple years ago, I show you where we are with the, uh, the four G meters. I am happy to tell you that now we have, the whole city is now four G meters. And, and this is the meter that we can actually print out, oh, finance can just push the button to read the meters. We don't have to send a guy out to open the, the meter box and read the meters anymore. Now it's can, can be read uh, from finance department. And, and each property owner, the goal is each property owner can have access to their water consumption by log on to the account. Uh, we, we in the process of working with a company for upgrade our computer software, and then eventually we will upgrade our computer software so the homeowner can do that. I will, I'm so happy that majority of this meter are replaced by city staff. There's some that by contractors, but majority are done by, by city staff. Okay. This is another map that show when, when the water main was put in. And so this past almost twenty years, we have been replaced a lot of water main in, in the old part of town. So my goal is, is, is to replace the, the pipe that older than sixty years old. And, and, and so, within, hopefully within five years, I will have that done. Like right now, we are in the process of putting in the new water main up Lawton, just past your house. And so it will, it will complete by, within two weeks. And we just completed the one on Daisy Tulip East of Anderson. And after we completed replacing the water main, uh, we will grind pave the street. So that's a, that's the whole idea.
And how are we paying for all these water mains?
Yes.
How are we paying for them? Out of the rate payers funds or some other mechanism?
Yes, so, so the, the way we, we paying for this is from three different account. Okay, what happened in the existing, existing water main is, is only six inch, six inches in diameter. We increased to eight, to increase the capacity. So the difference between six and eight, it pay out of development impact fee. So the portion within the six inches is paid out of user, water user fee. And to pave the street, part of it come from the water and part of it come from, uh, measure I or SB one money. So we use three different funding source to do this project, and, and we use Sierra general fund. And other people have not figured out how to do this yet, so.
So, about fifty-six percent, fifty-seven percent of the charge is to the rate payers and about forty-some percent is the expansion.
Yes.
Because eight, eight, eight is almost twice as big as a six.
Yes, and, and we calculated the portion, the, uh, the trench, which is about two feet wide or three feet wide, uh, the pavement, pay out of the water fund, and, and the rest is paid out of the, uh, either gas tax or SB one funding.
Do you have any major concerns that, uh, our water mains coming from our pumps are seventies and eighties?
Well, we, we, we've been seventy and eighty. This?
Yeah.
Now it's in good shape. We, we, and we just replaced the one underneath the railroad track and the counter flood control. Uh, when SB CTA is due to train to Redlands, they have to rework their, their, uh, the chant, the, the bridge. So we went ahead and put in new sleeve and new pipe. And the same thing I'm doing on, on the, uh, Mountain View section, yes.
Answering that question, can you discuss the different materials that were used in the different eras?
I, I know you're gonna ask me that, cause I have a heart. Right now, what were we, in, in the past, they use steel pipe. Well, first of all, where old, old pipe, they use concrete. The concrete. The concrete work great, but they don't use it anymore. They, they moved from concrete to, to steel, and, you know, steel with the corrosion is, is, is create a hole and it's leak. And then later on, they, they come up with the steel with mortar line, which is concrete line inside, it still leak. So now with, with the new pipe that we use, it's called ductile iron pipe. And in addition to that, we put the plastic on the outside, the sleeve outside the pipe, so to prevent from the cathodic protection, so prevent from, from water to be, I mean, the pipe for, for rusting and, and cause the leak. So we use the, it's cost more, but it's gonna last a hundred year.
Earthquake mitigation?
Yes. We, we, what we do is, the one that, the new one that we put in at the, uh, at the channel, we put in a little chalk of softer to, to the, to the pipe, so if it move with the bridge. Yes, sir. And, and being, the other location, before, they just weld the pipe, but now we use bolt to, to tie that, the, the pipe together. And with, at, at any angle, we put in concrete trust block to prevent the hall, the water hammers and, and, and prevent from separating, so... So my goal is all this new pipes should last the next hundred years, so we doing very good.
That's less than one lifetime in Loma Linda.
I'd be retired within five years, I'll be, be really good. But anyway, I, I just want to point out that we have been doing very good as far as replacing the meters, replacing, uh, the pipeline itself, so, so we doing very good. In, in front of your house.
Is it really? It's not at like some central?
No, so each one have individual...
No.
Yes. A, a lot of time is right next to your property line, between your house and your neighbor, you should, usually side by side.
But it's down in that, where the valve is and all that, it's down in there?
Right, right, down below. It's in the meter box.
Create a special, uh, landscape district for the pipe going by Rigsby's house, so he's gonna pay for that himself?
No, because it's up on the hill, he's the older part of town, he's not...
Special assessment.
He keeps bragging about he's gonna be able to run fire hose level pressure now, so...
Yeah, so we want him to pay at a local level, as close, as granular as we can get.
You can get high pressure if nobody's drawing the water. It's the draw rate versus the feed rate that determines the dynamic pressure.
Another announcement I have is starting next Monday, December the fourteen, so the second and the fourth Monday of the month, we will have a, a COVID-19 testing at our senior center, so that's, that's the good news. We work with the, uh, the county, and we can have a testing center here.
When, when is that again? Because I've been asked by several people, COVID testing is when?
The second and the fourth Monday of the month.
And, and location?
The senior center.
Oh, okay.
And is that free?
Yes, free.
Okay.
No, the, the one that you swap the nose with, from, from nine thirty to five, but you still have to go on their website and make an appointment.
Yeah.
Three days.
And if you crash...
Two days, actually, with two days. So we've been... Yeah.
And if you crash on your way there, you will be a trip.
I've been testing every two weeks, and, and just because. And for, what's so nice about right here, the city staff have priority. All I have to do is show the city shirt and, uh, city ID.
Yeah, if we had a city shirt, that would work great.
Well, you, you can show your, your, your councilman ID. Eh, that's not... So, and then in addition to that, we also work with the county for where we're gonna dispense the, uh, the vaccination, and the goal is to have it right here also at the senior center and the Grayson, so, for, this is in addition to the hospital and, and Beale Clinics and...
Senior age, senior age council members first, or?
I, that, that, that's, they, they have procedure for that, that's, that's part.
One, two, three, four.
You know, I, I've gotta say, uh, I had multiple, uh, and I, I'm sorry I hadn't shared this with you, multiple citizens that were very appreciative that we had a ballot box right outside the city hall here.
The what box?
Ballot box for election.
Yes.
Yeah.
So right now, just to let you know, I, we have a, a conference call with the county, uh, CAO, and, and all the city manager once a week with, with, with regard to the COVID and what's going on in, in our county.
And, and we're setting up another ballot box for the Massachusetts election, too, or the Georgia election.
Yeah, but since the whole thing's a hoax, then it doesn't matter. I've had multiple citizens, uh, initially that asked about whether we were gonna have a, a box locally, and then when we did, they were very appreciative that they could just walk down to city hall and drop their ballot in the box. So that, that was a good move.
And right now, we have a good working relationship with the county, so he's, he's been, he's been working well.
Hey, I'll, I'll bring, I'll bring up something. Is, is there a way to work with, uh, well, let me back up. Do we provide IT services for the library, or do they do their own?
They do their own.
I didn't know that it was gonna be that complex of an answer, sorry.
I'm trying to remember, right? Yeah, they, they, they do their own, but we have, we have the ability for them to use ours. So it's in there, and then we manage their cameras, I think. There is some, there is some overlap on that.
So the, the question would be this, is, is there a way that we can work with them to restrict their broadcasting of their Wi-Fi to their business hours only? Um, because my understanding is that we become kind of a hotspot for people to park here at night and on the weekends to get access to the free Wi-Fi at the Wi, at the library.
It's not just the library, it's city hall, too. It's, we have, we have a public, if you turn on your stuff, you see the Loma Linda public Wi-Fi.
And it's always running twenty percent?
It's always running, we don't turn it off.
And they're not always parking, they're sometimes tenting.
Well, yes, however they're commuting, the, the point is, it's all, a lot of it's after hours and...
So there, there is, I mean, actually, and the sheriff's department has been really good about, you know, added patrols and making sure people aren't loitering. Um, they, they've done well, and no, we have not turned off our Wi-Fi here on the weekends. It, it causes a problem trying to, well, as you know, trying to restart stuff again on Monday.
All right. I, I just, I was talking to the Hope Team guys today, and they expressed that, uh, they're, they're getting a lot of requests and challenges referenced the, on the weekends, after hours, holidays, where the homeless are congregating out here, and she's, and they're doing it because the access to the Wi-Fi.
Yep, the window right outside the fire chief's office is prime, prime real estate.
He should sell, he should sell access to that.
So, um, we, we can explore it, but like, as you know, turn, turning Wi-Fi off and turning it on becomes problematic with, you know, renewing the leases as stuff comes back up on...
It's, it's interesting, I hadn't considered that it was ours. I, I was told it was all just the library.
No, we're...
Which makes it somebody else's problem, but if it becomes our problem, then I don't necessarily want it.
It, it's as much ours as theirs, yeah.
Okay. Okay, that concludes our city council agenda. Let's move into the housing authority. Mr. City Manager, do we have any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Do we have any comments from the public? Seeing none, we're moving on to the consent calendar. I have a motion. And a second, Madam Clerk.
The motion is to approve the consent calendar for the housing authority agenda. Councilman Gendal?
Aye.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Per temporary Daley?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, we have no new business scheduled. Any, uh, reports from officers or council members? Seeing none, we will adjourn the housing authority. Moving into the successor agency, do we have any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay, we already talked about the closed session earlier today, which dealt with the successor agency, and, uh, are there any, uh, comments from the public? Looking over and seeing none, we will move into the consent calendar.
Move it.
I go first?
Second.
And a second, Madam Clerk.
And the motion is to approve the consent calendar for the successor agency. Councilman Gendal?
Aye.
Councilman Leonard?
Aye.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Per temporary Daley?
Aye.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we will adjourn with that, and that concludes our meetings for this evening. Thank you for attending.